Good evening. Thank you for joining our special Board of Directors meeting this evening. To begin, I want to introduce myself. My name is Julie Bocanegra. I'm the Board President. I will now make a roll call to confirm the other attendees. Director Victoria Bradford. Victoria?
She's muted.
Can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Okay.
There you are. Director Rob Perkins.
I'm here.
Director Jenny Gronwald.
Here.
Director Rachel Rogers.
Here.
Superintendent Mike Merlino.
Here.
Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening again. I'm Julie Bocanegra and I announce the time at 5:33. Governor Inslee's proclamation 2028 in response to the COVID-19 outbreak temporarily suspends portions of Open Public Meeting Act. The proclamation requires that all attendees in an open public meeting not take place in person but occur remotely, including the Board Directors and the public. Our meeting this evening is conducted via Zoom audio webinar. At this time, I will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. The first order of business this evening is to adopt the agenda. And I just want to remind the Board of Directors that when you make a motion, if you please state your name prior to the motion. So with that, can we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
Julie, my name is-
Go ahead.
My name is Rob Perkins. I move that we adopt the agenda as it's been presented.
Director Gronwald seconds.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We will now take a roll call vote for that. For me, it's an aye. Vice President Bradford?
Aye.
Director Perkins?
Aye.
Director Gronwald?
Aye.
Director Rogers?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we'll move to our Board Consent Agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Director Gronwald moves to accept the Board's Consent Agenda.
Director Perkins second.
All right, all in favor say aye. For me, it's an aye. Vice President Bradford?
Aye.
Director Perkins?
Aye.
Director Gronwald?
Aye.
Director Rogers?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to our Superintendent Consent Agenda. Again, we will entertain a motion for approval.
Director Bradford makes a motion to accept the, as written, please.
Director Gronwald seconds.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Again, we'll take a roll call vote. For me, aye. Vice President Bradford?
Aye.
Director Perkins?
Aye.
Director Gronwald?
Aye.
And Director Rogers?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, and with that now, we'll go ahead and move into our Superintendent Report. Actually, hold on one second. Nope, I'm sorry. We're on Matters Reserved for Board Action. Okay. Give me just one second.
Okay, so Julie.
Yes, please.
There is a letter about a non-renewal for one of our teachers, Kelly Egan. Through the process that we've gone through, this year, we had to non-renew certain provisional positions within the district. And Kelly Egan has worked in the district for two years. And we met with her a couple of weeks ago and listened to her appeal. The Board needs to take formal action on the letter moving that forward. We're very hopeful that a position comes available. I think the belief is similar to what we had to go through a couple of years ago with some of the non-renewals. We were able to end up with positions for all of our staff. And we expect this will happen for Kelly as well. But because of the deadlines in state law, we have to move this letter forward and are very hopeful that this ends up not ending up occurring.
All right, thanks, Mike. I know that I talked to Janine earlier and she told me that she's been able to move quite a few folks. And as, as the end of the school year comes, then we'll have a better idea of where we can place folks.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion or questions from the Board?
I think it's important to note in the letter, it does say that it's not as a result of her, you know, her work, you know, it's just strictly because of the current situation. She's been a good teacher.
It's not a performance issue at all. It's, it's, it's just a positions available situation that we're really hoping works itself out like it did last year for a number of folks.
That would be the best outcome. All right, well, then there's no other discussion, then we'll move for a motion on this.
Director Bradford here. I move for a motion to accept, do we just want this as an acceptance of the decision, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, for acceptance of the decision regarding employee non-renewal.
Director Gronwald seconds.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. At this point, we'll take a roll call vote. For me, it's an aye. Vice President Bradford?
Aye.
Director Perkins?
Aye.
Director Gronwald?
Aye.
Director Rogers?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, Mike, so just keep us up to date on that one.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, so next, we're going to move into textbook adoptions. I just wanted to let everyone know that we did a board workshop on this a week ago Tuesday night. Again, through the via Zoom webinar, we had a panelist of curriculum specialists join us. And they're here this evening to go through each of the sections and kind of give us a brief overview of the textbooks that are, or the curriculum that is up for adoption in our first reading tonight. Mike, did you want to add anything on that?
I would just, I guess all I would add is that we were fortunate last year to move forward with a pretty significant, the Fontes and Pennell adoption at elementary and feeling good about the fact that we're continuing to move adoptions forward for next year in the budget. And happy to hear some of the comments from the Ryan and Mike and John Akers about that. But yeah, we're excited about the next steps.
So Ryan, do you want to give us kind of a brief overview? And then maybe we'll do each, each section, one by one, that we, we have questions on individual. We can ask questions at that time. And I also want to let the public know that if you have questions about one or all of the text messages or text, the curriculum adoptions, that you would email Lori Stroll with any questions. And then somebody will get back to you tomorrow. Since we're not all together. So Ryan, do you want to start?
Yeah, a summary of the adoption process overview, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that would be great.
So the, the, basically, curricular specialists are charged with making determinations about when a new resource is needed for a course. And that sometimes is precipitated by a change in a course or a new course is added. In the case of a couple of adoptions that you'll hear about tonight, because the advanced placement exams, I think, had been changed. And that, that kind of means the course framework changes. But when a determination is made that a new resource is needed for a course, then the specialist gets together committee. Generally, you want some, something that's representative of the district. So for instance, I did a small adoption, so I was able to get representation from four of the five high schools. Hopefully, you get representation from all the high schools or for a middle school adoption, be all the middle schools. It's a representative collection of teachers that teach that, that subject though, or that grade level. And then that team determines what the best resource for the course would be. They have a set of criteria that they look at those resources through that is in Procedure 2020. And they, they consider those selection criteria as well as the needs of the course to determine what would be the best resource. They, when that committee makes that decision, they bring it to the Instructional Materials Committee for the district, which is made up of stakeholders that hold different positions in the district and three community members as well. And that body is charged with making an evaluation on the process that the adoption committee went through to select the best material. In this case, the Instructional Materials Committee voted, I believe unanimously in all cases, that the adoption committees went through a process that was rigorous enough to make a determination. And then it comes to the Board for a final approval.
Great, thank you. So I think you're going to start us off with the curriculum for AP US Government and Politics, an overview of that?
I certainly can. I think Mike Espinoza was prepared to start first with the middle school reading adoption, but-
We can, we can do it in any order that you prefer.
We were, well, we were planning on doing the order we did the IMC, the Instructional Materials Committee, and then the Board Workshop, so go ahead.
That works. So Mike, do you want to pick us off with middle school reading curriculum?
Yeah, I can give a nice overview of that. So we, this year, this coming school year, our middle schools are going to a new schedule, which is creating a new course in English Language Arts for grade six, seven, and eight, where before we had humanities courses that combined social studies with English Language Arts. So that end, and because we haven't had an adoption in some time, we were looking to seize the opportunity to provide, as Superintendent Merlino said, some cohesion K8 with our reading instruction. So we're adopting the Units of Study for Teaching Reading for the middle school grades. It's produced by Heinemann and authored by the Teachers College of Lucy Culkins, the reading and writing project there. This is in alignment with our currently adopted writing units. So there's a strong connection between the reading and the writing. It's also in alignment with the reading adoption at elementary school. We're actually going to be using some of the Fontes and Pennell resources with our sixth and seventh and eighth graders just to kind of promote some of that alignment. So our kids should have a strong ladder of instruction and the learning experiences across the K8 with one of the goals that it's about. Which you, just a little bit about the materials. They are three units per grade level that kind of hit some critical strands for reading and writing skills and habits. We're also hoping to provide, really, the backbone of this adoption is providing classroom libraries for each teacher. So each kid would have access, each student would have access to a variety of high-interest culturally responsive texts that really promote engagement with reading. One of the things that we tend to see at this level is a drop-off in reading engagement, which is also kind of corresponds with a drop-off in reading achievement. So the libraries and provisioning those libraries and connecting those libraries to these units of instruction will go a long ways towards building strong readers in our middle school level. Just a couple of other notes. One of the things, one of the pieces of our vision that's really important and evergreen is really centered around workshop instruction, where it's, we design instruction to meet the needs of each child and in a strength-based way with goal setting. And so this curriculum is really designed with that perspective in mind. It, it, as Ryan said, was one of the easily best reviewed of all of the, of the curriculum that we looked at, that the committee deemed just most closely aligned with our philosophy. I think one other piece too is that because it's a balanced literacy approach, it really empowers our teachers, as I said, to work with kids in small groups and one-on-one, so that it's not a one-size-fits-all kind of instructional model for our kids, that they each work across a progression of reading behaviors, habits, and skills. And the teachers are empowered to provide what they need. And with lots of great books to provide, I think we'll see some strong acceleration in terms of our reading achievement with our kids. So that's basically an overview of the curriculum. Once again, it's called the Units of Study for Teaching Reading Middle School Grades.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Michael about the reading curriculum for middle school? I know that I'm excited, especially how it's a continuation of the curriculum that we just purchased this last year for elementary. So I'm hopeful that just continues on. And that as we continue with our elementary adoptions over the next couple of years, that we have enough materials in place to really make a difference.
Yeah, we should see some strong alignment there, which was definitely one of our goals. So that's exciting.
All right, well, then who would like to go next on the? Ryan, do you want to do?
John was going to go next.
Oh, John's going to go next.
I can go next. We follow the same order we did before. The first text I have up for adoption is Environmental Science, AP Environmental Science. The title of the book is Environmental Science for the AP Course. As Ryan alluded to in his introduction, the reason to change is very obvious. The College Board changed both the structure of the text and the test in this course. We knew this a year in advance. So we had teachers that went to the training last year and kind of got a heads up in the summer. So we adopted the text that we had throughout this year. I think it worked out real good and it worked out especially good due to COVID-19 when they quit. Basically, where they were in the new alignment is where you had to be for the test. And so we were in good shape, but we wanted to go back and legally, obviously, adopt the text. The other thing is, we spent a bunch of time on this one, making sure that the electronic platform, the learning platform for the student was as good as what we had in our previous text. We had a really, really good platform with the Pearson book. And this book from Bedford Freeman and Worth is just as good, we feel, for the student. And it's a lot better aligned, making, making learning a lot more efficient for the student and a lot more efficient for the teacher to present. So that's a pretty straightforward rationale for the AP Environmental Science. Any questions on that?
Does the Board have any questions for John?
I don't have any questions. I just think, you know, in light of the current, you know, circumstances and concerns of people regarding the environment, I think it's very timely to have something that is as current as possible.
Yeah, we feel the same way. And, and also, now that we're online as much as we are, and we may be in the fall or whatever, it, it's very user-friendly on the, on the Chromebook, so there's not a problem there at all. We just wanted to make sure that we were, we had the same quality. So we're looking forward to that one. The next one I have, I have two more, Floral Design. We teach roughly 400 students in floral design every year. So it's a very popular class. It also gets an art credit for the first year. So we have, our, our floral teachers are actually our, our horticulture teachers. That doesn't always work that way, but right now, that's the case. And so the same group of people went through both of these books for recommendations. The floral book is, we feel, is very student-friendly. We have a wide variety of students that take that course. They may be pure floral kids. They may be FFA agriculture kids. It can be kids that are interested in hort, like a hort floral combination. We do have considerable special ed population, special groups, ELL. So it's a very readable book. We have to be very conscious of standards and CTE. So this is one where we're looking at giving a new industry certification. So the fact that this book lined up with certifications, it lined up with standards, it lined up with state standards, has a STEM component to it. And again, we spent considerable time looking at the online learning suite for the students. We really liked this particular publisher, Goodheart. And Wilcox have done a really nice job of putting all the components in there for the agriculture that we need. So it's just everything under one roof, so to speak. And so we're recommending Floral Design for both Floral 1, 2, and 3, 4. Any questions on that one?
I have a couple of questions and a comment. Sure. Floral Design 1, 2, and 3, 4 constitutes two years of study?
Yes.
So each of these courses are one semester?
Yeah, one's a semester, two's a semester, three and four, right, right.
Okay, so one could theoretically go from Floral Design in the ninth grade all the way to the end of Horticulture with these certifications.
Absolutely.
If there was an interest there. I am, and this is the comment, is that this is the first curriculum action that we've done where we talked about the scaffolding around it containing a, an industry certification and therefore one of the legitimate pathways, which I'd hoped to begin to see after the passage of House Bill 1599. Was that just last year? That was just last year.
Just last year, yes.
So, yeah, that's, that's my comment, is, is just the appreciation and the focus that CTE is always, always had on a career path for our students. And, you know, I could go on, but that's the essence, is, is the feeling of, you know, appreciation that there's a way to do this without necessarily a four-year degree and then there's a way for these kids, if they're interested in it, to get into working in something they're interested in. I like that.
Well, I appreciate that and thank you for bringing that up.
I, I like the, the aspect that it's like running your, you know, it's like running a business. And so they get experience from the business side of it as well. Obviously, the creative side is the fun part. But for a lot of kids, just getting that business experience is really good as well. So I appreciate that part about the program.
Well, and that does bring up a point too of students. They could stay in that Horticulture Floral, but they could also go into business. And so, you know, that's what we're doing right now is, is petitioning, so to speak, OSPI for, for pathways that, graduation pathways that include more than one pathway. But that's really what they're doing in the floral shop, is really getting a retail experience there. For Horticulture, we picked Horticulture today. It's also from Goodheart and Wilcox. So immediately, I kind of felt my, my job was to make sure we weren't just grabbing a book because it was under the same kind of design and structure. But they really worked well together. They are two distinctly different books. And I'll just say briefly with Horticulture, our, our real challenge here is, we're working with a dual credit, where kids can get, students can get college credit, or working with Clackamas Community College. And it's a challenge to get enough science, because the first year of Horticulture is also a science credit in high school. And then you're trying to get enough greenhouse management and Horticulture, so that if a student were to take the four semesters of Horticulture, they would then qualify for an opening course at Clackamas Community College. So we have many, many students in here, in this class, for different reasons. But once again, the standards lined up very easy for us. It's a readable textbook. There aren't a lot of Horticulture textbooks left out there, to be honest with you. But we thought this was far and above the, the best of the, of what we tested. In fact, they let us go a little, the publisher let us go and gave us some materials with the COVID-19. And so basically, our Horticulture kids right now are getting a little bit of this textbook in a blend with what they would normally get on their online learning right now. And then I'd just like to add, for all three texts, because we have advisory boards, the texts have been, have been run through the Agriculture Advisory Board, which means professionals have graded it, parents have graded them, and students have graded them. And I think that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Is there any other questions for John on either, any of those? Well, I'm excited to hear about how many people are in Floral Design and taking that class. That does show that there's a lot of interest. All right, Ryan?
All right, well, for AP Advanced Placement, Government and Politics, we are moving, we're recommending for adoption a text from BFW Publishers called American Government Stories of a Nation. The need for a new text emerged really last year when the College Board changed AP exam. But even before that, the, the current textbook that we have is over a decade old. It's, it's not like having an old science textbook, but it, it's a little dated. So it was in need of a new resource anyways. The resources we looked at, again, there, there are five schools that have an AP government teacher, a course, either one or two sections, being of the school. Four of the five teachers were involved in the adoption committee. And that fifth teacher, who was not involved in the adoption committee, still had an opportunity to, to recommend some texts. I can't remember who recommended what, but the only two titles that came up from that group of five were the two titles that we brought through a review, review process. Both of them were, were well-aligned to the content of the course. They were both redesigned and rewritten with the redesign of the AP exam, so a high alignment would be expected. The resource we chose, it wasn't, it wasn't really on the strength of the alignment over the other, over resource. It was really on the strength of the ancillary and online resources. So in addition to a full student digitized text that they can access online, there's a suite of resources for the teacher, including a wraparound teacher's edition that gives some instructional guidance. There are some kind of exam prep stuff for the students and teachers. And a reader that takes some of the, I think there are 15 specific documents that AP teachers are required to make sure students understand and can use those documents and arguments, basically, and free response questions. And the, the reader that we can get with this text also is integrated into the course. And it takes those 15 documents, which are in the public domain, and we can get the documents themselves for free. But it takes them and brings it through, there's just a lot of scaffolding for those. As you can imagine, with primary source documents, oftentimes the language is a little archaic. The vocabulary is not really keeping high school kids in mind. So it's nice to have the reader, which allows them to, to give some support in digesting those documents and pulling the information out. Otherwise, I guess I told the, the Board and the IMC, really, the, we had two good choices in, in front of us. The other was a text from AMSCO, but both were really well-aligned to the course. And really, the teachers felt that either would, would work. But on the strength of the online resources, this one just was much better. Had much more robust presence with its online resources. And I, I don't know if you have any questions, feel free, but it was kind of a slam dunk process. It was really the, the teachers, some of them were piloting some of the, the sections in, in their class and in using stuff. Students, the, the one we chose to adopt is a, is a more just in kind of engaging at arm's length, meaning, you know, it's got more color and pictures and things like that than the one we chose not to adopt.
All right, any questions for Ryan for the AP US Government and Politics?
I like the ability to read through some of the sample chapters. I thought the, the content as it was presented, the sample chapter that I saw presented was on federalism and the way that it was presented argued very neutrally and presented both sides of the issue. So it looks really to be in compliance with the policies that we have about presenting controversy and teaching how to work your way through a controversy. Appreciate that look into things and it's easy to, easy to support the committee's decision and the IMC's decision.
Thanks.
I appreciate too that we got all of the teachers from all the high schools involved in the process. And so they all had a voice when it came to which text to bring forward.
Yeah, it's certainly easier with a smaller adoption or there are only five teachers in the district of this course. So it's easier with that than something like middle school reading that Mike was challenged with doing. But we, certainly it's good to get voices from every, every school that's impacted with any adoption. So that, that was very nice. And like I said, the one teacher that didn't, wasn't able to engage fully in that process, still had an opportunity for feedback.
For me, I just would say thanks to Ryan and Michael and John for leading the process and working us through that. I think when, when, another thing Michael mentioned last week when we did this was I think that the middle school reading adoption last occurred in 1994. Does that sound accurate from what we heard? And then I think the elementary reading adoption may have been in that timeframe and timeframe also, if not before. So it is nice to be able to provide new materials for our staff. A lot of the feedback that we've received this year has been positive. But just really want to thank the three of you and all the teachers that participated in that process to get us to where we're at today.
Very welcome.
All right, so do we need to make a motion or do we just need to bring it forward to our next meeting as a second reading?
I think that's right.
Just bring it forward and then in the meantime, if anybody has any questions, get them to Mike. Berlino?
Yeah, no, I don't want anything sent to me, you know that, nothing sent to me. Now, I think that they're supposed to be sent to Lori, possibly Stroll, but if you send them to me, I'll get it to whoever needs it.
Well, if we, if the board has questions, that's what I was saying. If, yeah, if the board has questions, we'll send them to Mike. If people in the public audience have questions, they need to send an email to Lori.stroll@evergreenps.org. And then she'll make sure that the questions get forwarded to Mike and the board and that way we have those before the second adoption.
Yeah, I think.
The second reading.
It's probably appropriate that I respond to questions from you all. I agree with that.
Okay, so then I guess we will be moving the textbook adoptions to a second reading at our June meeting. All right, thank you gentlemen for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to our superintendent report.
Okay, I want to just update on a few things. First off, I think what I provided at each of these is kind of an update on the, the three kind of main areas that the, the governor had given, given to us as our, our three kind of driving things as we went through the closure. First was distance learning. And we've talked extensively about all the work that's gone into creating the distance learning plan that you all approved earlier in the resolution on the consent agenda, one of the consent agendas. I, I think what's appropriate would be to thank all of our staff, our teachers, all staff in the work that they've put in with our students. Not only the work that's gone into from the teaching and learning crew here and the principals in the buildings working with their, their teachers and their staff in the buildings to create kind of the model that we have with the landing pages, the common schedules, the communication. But in the last week and particularly today, I started kind of reaching out to each of the principals, talking to them individually and just kind of getting feedback from them, thanking them for the work that they've done. And in what is occurring often is, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into trying to communicate with the families and with the students. And, and I think the longer the closure goes and the closer we get to June, the end of the school year, it's, it sometimes gets more challenging. And to hear about our staff doing everything they can to make sure that they're making communication with our, our students through staff visits to homes, through emails, through phone calls, through doing everything that they possibly can to make sure that their students are staying connected. It is very reassuring. The other, the other thing we heard a little bit about was, you know, pot potentially for the future, when we do get to the point where we're coming back and working onsite, the need to do a lot of the technology with our students is over time becoming more comfortable for our staff. You know, some, some of these things that we've, we've been doing haven't always been the, the most easy or comfortable for staff. But the, the fact that we're kind of thrown into this continuous learning situation has really challenged everyone in the district. And I feel real comfortable and appreciative of the way that folks have stepped up to that challenge and kind of met it head on. So we continue with the distance learning. And again, June 19th being the last day of school, we'll, we'll continue working hard all the way through. One of the other things that we were charged with was making sure we were doing everything we could to feed our students. We, I think to date have served almost 300,000 meals to our, our students since the closure. I think the first day we started was March 17th, somewhere thereabout. So a little over two months, we've been able to do that. One of the other things that's, I think, positive coming out of that, that effort. And against, again, we've had, whether it's been the nutrition services staff, we've had transportation staff, the Chartwells is our, as our partner. We've had paras onsite, we've had secretaries onsite, we've had principals onsite. We've had any number of staff onsite distributing meals to kids in, in our buildings that have, have come on a daily basis. So that's been very inspirational to see the work that's gone on there as well. One of the things that has occurred is with the meals being delivered and, and distributed at the buildings, I think it's going to open up our opportunities to provide more meals during the summer. We've in the past partnered a lot with great partners, Share, PAL, Parks and Rec to provide meals for kids. We've, we've kind of created a model at a lot of the schools, the elementary schools in particular, where families just kind of have got to the point where they're, they're just comfortable with waking up in the morning and heading in and picking up their meals for the day. I think we'll end up distributing a lot more meals throughout the summer than what we've done in the past. And that's a positive thing as well. The last thing that we, that we had been asked to do was to create a, a daycare opportunity for our first responders and for our healthcare professionals. That expanded a little bit to some folks working in groceries. Remember the, the initial idea around this was the, to flatten the curve to try to provide a, a daycare opportunity for folks that might struggle to find them, in particular because of the concern about the rush that was going to be, you know, the, the increase in the number of, of potential sick individuals that would be putting pressure on our hospital system. Now, clearly the curve was flattened. We didn't see that. We haven't seen a lot of that. And so as we've gotten closer to the end of school, we actually had distributed letters to our families that were closing as of June 5th. We provided opportunities, contact opportunities through SWIC and other daycare for folks to step up, for folks to contact and potentially use for those last two weeks. I think that the feedback that we've received from our families has been actually a real tribute to the work that has gone on at Camp Evergreen from just the appreciation for everything. I think there's an understanding about the closure and the reason for the closure and just a lot of appreciation for what occurred at those sites. I heard today of some families that attribute, they kind of, they kind of connect Camp Evergreen with Crestline because that's where it's at and trying to talk about boundary exceptions possibly to go to Crestline because they love the program that their kids were participating in there. So that's a very positive thing. Thank you again to all the folks that we had that ran that camp. We relied significantly on our para-staff, para-professionals in the district. But we've had a number of others at the district office participate, our administrators on a rotating basis. At some points we've, we've had teachers that have volunteered. And I would particularly mention Emily Humphrey, who was, was one of the people kind of behind the scenes administratively working with staff to make them available. And then also Rhonda Walton, who was kind of an onsite person on a daily basis, making that happen. So that's been very successful. Graduation, we've talked previously about the virtual celebrations that will start the week of June 15th. A lot of work is going in on that from having students come in and do some musical performances. Us asking for pictures to be submitted, videos to be submitted. I know the boards come in and taped a message to our graduating seniors this year. Trying to do everything we can to make it as special as possible in a very difficult situation and unfortunate situation. Those will come out the week of the 15th. We still are planning to have some sort of an onsite graduation August or in the fall, kind of monitoring the phases of where we're at in terms of reopening. But we're still working on that. I want to thank the class advisors for all the work that's gone in to create these videos. It's a lot of work. And for folks that are typically involved with graduation to help make those virtual celebrations occur. And again, they will be broadcast at a certain time on YouTube, but that they can be seen at any point in time after that. So families that want to be able to see their students will be able to make that happen as well. We, we're getting to the point now where we're starting to talk about, I mean, we've kind of been, but what does school potentially look like in the fall? Superintendent Reichdahl has convened a 124-person task force to meet through Zoom meetings to look at various options. Those options that we've been looking at are in range of onsite to continuous learning, kind of 2.0. What does a new continuous learning look like for us? We've been meeting internally and we are getting, digging a little deeper into what options we may actually have available to us in the next, this week and in the next week or two. Well, not next week or two, really this Friday. And then also hopefully this week or next week, I'm going to be setting up individual meetings with some of our local legislators and governors, some of the governors' policy staff to kind of talk about opening school and just kind of give some perspective. There have been some kind of widely distributed, I, I know I've seen them on Twitter and different places, some of the guidelines the CDC is putting out with regard to social distancing and what it might be that school would look like onsite. And certainly we have to be concerned about the safety of our students and of our staff. There's no question about that. But some of the logistic things that they're putting out make it very problematic in terms of, of onsite moving things forward. So part of my conversation in those meetings is really around those types of things, just to help people get a sense. And an example would be some of the CDC guidelines around transportation. You know, we provide a lot of transportation in this district to bring students to school. And some of the things they're talking about are how do you socially distance on a school bus? And how many students does that truly mean you could even bring in on a school bus if you did that? And so trying to work through some of those things with our staff. We're working hard to come up with solutions. And I would imagine within the next few weeks, we'll have our ideas in terms of what that looks like. Definitely want to be able to share with our staff, our, our families, what the idea is around it. But we really can't get ahead of that until we see what the specific guidelines are that we receive from Superintendent Reichdahl's task force. So we'll be back with more information on that, absolutely. What we're doing on a daily basis, construction continues throughout the district on our elementary schools and on projects that we had moved forward on that were deemed appropriate, following, again, the guidelines from the governor. But we are fully comfortable that the three new elementary schools at Sifton, Emerald, and Image will be opening on time. It may be a week or so that we receive acceptance for the building than later than what we had thought. But it was built in a way that we would be receiving those buildings in mid to late July. So we don't see any issues with that. Very happy with the progress there. Budget work continues. I shared at the meeting, on our meeting last week that we do, we are aware, we're getting closer to the actual release of the, of the revenue forecast from the state and in terms of what the projection is for the potential shortfall, not just for the next year, but for the next, really three years. And we're working on that. We're, we're, we still don't have any specific information from the legislature, from the governor's office in terms of whether they will call a special session of the legislature back to start looking at that shortfall or whether they're going to wait until next January to address the shortfall, which is from now until June of '23 estimated at $7 billion. So it's a pretty significant number, but we continue to monitor that. And then the last thing that I would mention is the ongoing negotiations. We've had ongoing negotiations with EEA that I think have been positive. Early on, they were all being done by Zoom. Last week, we actually gathered together for the first time face-to-face in a room big enough for social distancing for everyone. And, you know, we've, we've been able to make positive progress every time we've gotten together. And so I know myself, I'm appreciative of our team, Janay Gomes and Tracy Thompson from HR, and then Bill Omen and Jay Buno. And then I'm also very appreciative of, of Bill Bevel and Lisa Rain and their team. So we meet again tomorrow and expect to see continued progress and going real well. So with that being said, I will, I will stop there.
All right, thanks, Mike. Does anyone have any questions for Mike? Mike, I have, oh, go ahead to Victoria.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Oh, Mike, I have a question. As we talk about the Reichdahl's seven phases that were sent out, like the possibilities. So is our, is our work trying to like, you know, kind of put a plan, preliminary plan around all of the different options that there might be come this fall so that we were prepared? Depending on which one we go with or which one is.
Yeah, so the work that's been ongoing is you, you have this distance learning that's in place right now. There were surveys of families, what's working, what's not working. We've listened to that feedback. There have been principals and staff involved with kind of a, like a continuous learning 2.0. What does that look like? And trying to make sure that the continuous learning plan that we have in And trying to make sure that the continuous learning plan that we have in place is one that is taking the successes from what we've seen this spring and trying to enhance on them and, and expand on those. So there's that work that's been going on. What would a continuous learning? Because even if we were allowed to come back at some point in time, what we hear is if there were an outbreak in the school, the school could be closed. And then you go to continuous learning if that was the case. So we have to have a robust program in place for continuous learning 2.0. So the teaching and learning group is working with principals, working with our staff here on, on that process, listening to feedback. What, what can we do to enhance that process? At the same time, we, we have to look at what a hybrid model would look like. And in, if we have an onsite, that's not just everybody comes back. Identifying what, you know, how, how can we bring as many students back in what fashion? Looking at the transportation issues we have. We heard a lot in the beginning and rightfully so around equity and making sure that kids were being taken care of and how do we provide appropriate opportunities for kids with that equity lens? And certainly I think most would agree that if you can't get to school because we can't get you there, whether it's you don't have the, the resources at home to make that happen or whatever, and, and we don't have the ability through busing because we've got a socially distance on the buses. That's an equity issue as well. So we have to identify through our process, kind of what is, what is the best option for a hybrid model of onsite learning as well as distance learning that we make? We hear a lot about the, we need to, we need to kind of let the science dictate what happens. And I think we hear a lot from our governor and from others that a vaccine is very important. So I guess we have to see how that develops. And but our work right now is to say, if we have these resources with respect to transportation and we, we have to try to kind of think about our outside the box, what's the best way of getting students in? And who are the students that suffer most from distance learning and, and it's the most difficult to teach? That's the work that we're looking at. So there's this one thread of distance continuing, continuous distance learning 2.0. At the same time, we're trying to figure out the best way to get kids in, in a safe fashion. And then when they're in school, what do the CDC guidelines tell us? And then ultimately, when are we going to get some actual direction with respect to this from the governor and from Superintendent Reichdahl? And then even when we get direction, does experience that we see in other states and other countries begin to dictate what we do as well? So it's this constant work.
Yeah. Just a lot to think about and a lot to plan and prepare for. So appreciate the work that your team's putting in.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work. Honestly, I just appreciate the work that's going in from everyone. I appreciate the work that's going in at home from the families. I appreciate the work that the students are, it's a, it's obviously, I've said it a few times. I don't know how many unprecedented things can happen in a, a, a two-year period or a, a one-year period. But if we open school with a high, that's another unprecedented thing that we end up facing. And so it's just really, really it is, you, you don't ever really stop thinking about what's happening and trying to figure out the best way to support our students. Because honestly, what this is all about is, is providing opportunities for our students. And the best opportunities for them is onsite in school with our, our staff that does a great job on a daily basis with them. So we're hoping to make that happen as quickly as we possibly can and obviously in the safe, in a safe way.
Thank you.
Mike, have you got ways to kind of bracket the costs of things as we go? There's a lot of uncertainty is what I mean. It'd be nice to learn if we're, if we're, and how much we're going to need to dip into the reserve funds in order to keep learning going in this kind of circumstance.
Yeah, I think the thing that we're waiting on honestly is to see, is there a legislative session called, a special session called? You hear a lot about the state protects basic education. I think you've seen articles talking about that, particularly with the, the new funding formulas. But the state has always protected basic education. I don't know, at least in the 20 years I've been around here and the 30-plus years I've been in this business, that the constitution ever changed. And so the constitution has always protected basic education. But I know firsthand that we've gone through cuts where basic education has been impacted. Because ultimately it becomes a math issue at the state level. And so it, it's hard to say exactly what the impact will be. It's important for us to watch whether there's a special session called. And I, I think what we're hearing is, you know, that there are some legislators calling for it, but that there isn't at this point. We're not sure whether it's going to happen. If it doesn't happen, we could get through the 2021 school year somewhat of a status quo. Of course, that's going to also be driven by what is the actual model that we come back in? And whether or not the legislature tries to impact funding based upon the model that we come back in. But if we get through 2021 somewhat unscathed, then I would imagine 21, 22 and 22, 23 are more difficult years. Which is why it is important for us right now to be able to save as much money as we can and have a reserve to help us mitigate some of the reductions that could be coming potentially down the road. So I think it's very important that we be as smart with the money in the short term so that we have more opportunities with it in the long term.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and move into board comments. So this is comments by the school board. Rob, do you have something?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. I know I'm personally in receipt of about 70 emails from different people talking about the circumstances the teachers have been facing and the different employees in the school. And I appreciate the heartfelt stories. And I'm saying that in connection with, with my work in the legislative committee at WASDA and this legislative rep here. Because right before the meeting, I received a document detailing the legislative positions that the legislative committee is going to propose to the general assembly in the fall. That meet, that general assembly is going to take place remotely. Some kind of massive 250 participant Zoom meeting or something like that. But we're already being asked to consider over 25 positions, 14 of them new. Four of those in connection with the emergency. And I wanted to bring those things to your attention and forward the documents to the rest of the board to have a look at that. The one thing I noticed is that the positions that we're considering to present to the WASDA assembly carry a lot of the subjects that the teachers have raised in their emails to us. So the concerns that they have are pretty much statewide and shared by everyone. I wanted to make that comment as we get into that. I really appreciate hearing that there's a lot of good faith in the bargaining. Thank you for mentioning that, Mike. And I've really appreciated hearing parent feedback on things. I know my kids have been home and two of them are in school, college or high school and disengaged. And I've also been participating in WASDA's weekly COVID-19 networking calls. I've been able to take that information and share it with other people across the state. And the feedback we're getting back from those folks is that the continuous learning plan and the measurements of student engagement, the methodology that Mike and his team formulated are above the board. They're really good compared to the baseline things that OSPI is going to be getting. So we're really innovating on, on getting good data to build a good thing. My sense is that OSPI without additional legislation is going to rely on that local control element and rely on us all to come up with plans within a kind of bracketed thing. So it was good to hear that we've got some workshops coming up about that. And it was good to hear that all the work that's gone into just coping with this. At the last, I just appreciate the staff from bus drivers, school secretaries, especially the teachers, knowing this is traumatic for all 27,000 of us. And all the work that they've put in. Thank you so much for all of that.
All right. Thanks, Rob. Any other board comments?
I just wanted to add, I agree with Rob. I have received many emails and I appreciate getting them and the staff that has taken the time to write to us. We do appreciate hearing from you and then getting your feedback because it's really important to us as we move forward. And the other thing I wanted to say is I wanted to kind of echo what Mike said in the superintendent report. I know that the virtual graduation ceremonies are taking a lot of time and effort to put together. And I know our staff, not only the high school advisors, but they've been working with our community relations folks on making sure that these videos are, you know, well-produced and put together. And so I'm really excited to see the finished product. I think that, I think our next board meeting is right before those virtual graduation ceremonies. But so I, you know, I'm excited to see those when they come out. And hopefully we'll be able to do something in the late summer, early fall. So we have some in-person celebration.
I hope we're into phase two by then, but who knows?
All I know is I have never been, so it's been maybe, it's been over 20 years since I've been this excited about the last day of school. That means it all gets to be put away.
Yeah. Well, you've got, you've got your hands full with three that you're guiding through this. So thanks to all the parents out there too, that are going through this.
My son is definitely tired of me as a math tutor. He'd like somebody else by now.
I've been really enjoying seeing the different elementary schools and their parade of teachers going through their neighborhoods. And I happened to run into the one from BBC on my way to work one morning. And it was just so inspiring to see them with all their signs and balloons and different things. And just that personal touch that I know is so important to our families and the kids. So I, I really want them to all know that it's been noticed and the community's really enjoying it.
All right. Anything else? All right. If not, then we will go ahead and move on to citizen comments. We did open up citizen comments to send, for people to send in emails. I'm under the understanding that we did not receive any emails before this board meeting tonight. That's correct, Lori. Thank you. So at this time, we will call for a recess of this portion of the board meeting. But we will immediately reconvene for a board workshop where we will discuss board superintendent relationship, BSR2, single unit of control. So we will go ahead and move into the board workshop. So Mike, did you want to discuss this?
Real, real quick, BSR2, single unit of control is, is just a single issue around emergency superintendent. When there's a period of time, it's part of the board's OE and, and results policies, board superintendent relationship. We identify an emergency superintendent in the documents. And I'm recommending that we have Janay Gomes be the emergency superintendent. So it's, it's, I think this is just kind of a first reading of that, that we would then come back with the actual documents. I think that that's accurate, but that's really all there is with this.
So Mike, has she looked at the, because I know there's a series of policies for Janay to review?
So there's, there's a, you do have to acknowledge a familiarity with all of the OEs and the results policies. And, and she has enjoyed the process with us the last few years. So she's familiar with those. And we don't have the document signed yet, but I think we'll do that once we start moving through the process with the board. And have that final, when it's, when it's brought for final approval, we would, we would do that. But I, I think this is just the first time it's coming forward. We have to do this actually formally as part of the board.
Do, it might, you can discuss it with, I guess, whoever we take advice from for this, but might be just a piece of the superintendent's consent agenda to present us with the document that we can talk about if we wanted to. But here we are talking about it now.
Yeah, we can do that at the next meeting. It's really just a matter of her initialing all of her, her familiarity with all of the policies and then signing off. We could certainly provide that at the next board meeting. I think it's June 16th.
I noticed that you modified the interpretation and indicators document to name her there. And I think that's, that's the process.
Yep.
So we just have to receive the notice.
We will do that.
So Rob, you're saying all we need to do is to see the document that she's signed off on all of the policies?
I think so. There are no substantive changes to the interpretation and indicators. It's just, we changed the name of the person.
Person.
Yeah. And that is a duty that's delegated to Mike. So I think we can just see it and I approve it or whatever, use whatever procedures are. If one of us doesn't agree to actually have the formal discussion and meeting. If we want to make it an agenda item, we can.
I think it'd be good to set a practice to have it be an open meeting, board review of who it's going to be. Just as being transparent with the public about who would be in charge if we had an emergency situation and Mike was not able to be in charge for hopefully just a moment. But just to keep, and then to make sure that the board doesn't have any concerns about anybody that was being put into that position.
I'd like introducing a new principal, huh?
Pardon?
Like introducing a new principal?
Well, this is a little bigger than that.
But the procedure you're talking about would be kind of the same as when we get introduced to the new administrators or promotions at that level. And this is a higher level. So I think you're right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is this is an appropriate way to bring it forward. But we could, now that we've had the discussion, we could bring it to the consent, superintendent consent agenda for approval.
Yeah.
At the next meeting, as long as we have the discussion prior to. Does that sound good to everyone?
I think what I heard Victoria say was that we should have it as a specific agenda item on the board, on the agenda. But it might be like the policy review we were doing a couple of years ago, where we were bringing each of the thousand policies up, talking about them. And we only need to do one reading, in my opinion.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we'd make it an agenda item, but we wouldn't have to bring it up twice.
Right.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess are we clear on how we're bringing it forward to the next meeting?
I think we're clear, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to meet in person someday. It'd be nice to get back to that.
I agree.
It will happen, but those, what is now 60 new cases from that food processing plant?
Yeah.
I think it's emblematic of what could be happening over the next couple of years as we go on. Is that we're going to have facilities that close for a cleaning and a quarantine and reopen kind of that case counts going in waves and tell, and if we have the vaccine that we need in order to protect everybody the correct way. And we're, that's just not in our control.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully soon we will all meet in person. But if there is no other business, we're going to call for an adjournment. Okay? Everyone have a great night. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care. Good night.
Bye.